Yeah, definitely.
I'm, uh, that was a joke. Are we ready?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting, Patent Board of Supervisors, May 28th, 2025, to order. If we could all rise for the saying of our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undrawn, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone here, as well as anyone online. As we like to say, we welcome all, especially new Patent Township residents, to the Patent Township community with our mantra, "A place for all." So at this time, any additions to the posted agenda?
Not an addition, but there will be one deletion from the agenda. We'll hold the audit until the June 18th meeting.
All right, duly noted. Audits are good. At this time, any public comments, anything pertaining to items on the agenda? We just ask that you hold those comments until that time. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, presentations. The proposed ordinance 2025-647, amending the property maintenance code.
So as the board is aware, we've been discussing rental housing regulations, in particular for short-term rentals. So this ordinance amends our property maintenance code, changed the trigger for a rental housing permit from seven consecutive days to one day. That means that if you are renting your house for Penn State football weekend, you need to obtain a rental housing permit and go through the safety inspections. Additionally, we're gonna turn on the point system, which will help us track if we have issues related to any rentals in the property, in the township, not just short-term rentals. And if you amass five rentals, or five points on your rental property, you have to come speak with the township manager to have a corrective action plan. And then at 10 points, you have your permit revoked for a period of a year. And then at last week's meeting, or last meeting, Supervisor Abrams discussed having a metric so that we could do a report. So I added to, when the board considers the motion, I added to that, that we would set a one-year review date of June 1st, 2026, and then the board would hear a report on what we found. I will note that on the rental housing permit application, there will be a place to check if it's a short-term or a long-term. That will help us gather data on if these, how many of these renters we have. And we are gonna do a push through social media and other places to let folks know, because the goal here is compliance, not to be punitive with people.
And we have a good language when we push this out to residents. It feels pretty clear and what our goal is.
Yep, I will work with Sophie on that as well. Yep.
Okay. It'd be great if we can see that before it gets pushed out.
Provide any feedback. All right, so we've been discussing this. Do I have to, can I just open the public hearing? All right, so I will open the public hearing for the proposed ordinance 2025-647 at this time. Any questions, comments?
There's no one black going down.
From the public.
Nothing from the public side? We've been talking about this for a while now. A few meetings, lots of meetings. So, all right. Any comments from the board?
Close the public hearing.
Oh. Uh, do I need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second. First and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, public hearing is closed at this time. So during a public hearing, only?
Residents.
Residents talk. Okay. All right, any feedback, comments from the board?
Question.
Supervisor Rob.
Amy, did we get any questions from the public? Because we are voting on this a couple of days after the holiday that...
We have not heard from anyone, no.
Yes, I want that covered, that we, you know, we allowed people to call in prior to this, so we're covered.
Yeah.
For them saying that it was a holiday, we couldn't, you know, we didn't know anything. I just want that covered.
Yeah, we, kind of the interest in these dropped off after we determined a path forward in terms of the folks that were coming to the meetings.
Okay.
They were very agreeable to the path forward.
Okay.
So I, yeah, we haven't heard from people in a couple of months now.
Great, thank you.
All right.
I have a question, actually.
Supervisor Whitman?
It was really a great question. I think I've said that before.
Forward to...
Yes, I did have, just a quick personal question.
Question about the Township.
Is it, does it, is that what it's?
Half Moon Township doesn't, to my knowledge, have rental housing regulations.
Okay, so that's what's happening.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it.
That's it.
All right. Seeing no other comments from the board, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve, um, the, uh, sorry, the, um...
Ordinance 2025.
Yeah, exactly, ordinance 25 dash 647.
Second.
All right. We have a motion that's been seconded. No more comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on, financial statement presentation. This was the one that is moved.
Yeah, this one's gonna be held until the June 18th meeting.
All right. Well, moving on then, Public Safety Chief.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Copy of the April 2025 Public Safety was included with the materials this evening, and Larry is pulling my report up, I believe, for Town Line purposes.
Working on it.
Okay. While he's working on that, I'll get started here, though. So we had a very busy month. Our officers conducted 173 traffic stops, wrote 24 citations, five parking tickets, handled 32 criminal arrests. And our bike patrol was busy. They rode 38 miles, did 64 business checks, wrote one parking ticket, wrote, handled one incident, and handled one vacation home check. Under department notes, there was a 45-year-old male who was charged with criminal mischief and harassment. The male damaged a vehicle which belonged to his, to the current boyfriend of his ex-girlfriend. A 27-year-old female was cited for scattering rubbish. Bags of trash were located in a wooded area, and an officer was summoned and was able to identify a suspect when they found the suspect's name on items involved in, with, inside the trash bags. The officer interviewed the female, who admitted to dumping the bags into the wooded area. She claimed that she was upset because her hauler missed her residence when they came to do their pickup. A 32-year-old male was charged with false reports to law enforcement. The male reported a protection from abuse violation. After further investigation, it was determined that the male misled officers to believe that he actually had received a message in violation of the PFA. It was found that the message was received actually a day before the PFA went to effect, and that male knowingly provided false information to the officer who was conducting a criminal investigation. Seven arrests were made for retail theft, four for driving under the influence, and our officers successfully served 17 warrants of the 44 they attempted. Thirteen of those were as part of a warrant night, Judge McLean. Every year before the students leave, we try to tie up any loose summary warrants for traffic offenses typically, where an individual maybe owes a little bit of money. So we try to get those tied up before the students leave, before the end of the year. So we did, like I said, 13 of those. Officer Vardzel and Officer Brachowski worked with, with Officer McLean, or with Judge McLean to get through those. We did conduct 13 vacation home checks as well. Under use of force, our officers did use force in two incidents in the month of April. In the first one, our officers were dispatched to a domestic dispute. It was reported that the male half of the dispute was intoxicated, experiencing mental health issues, and was naked in public. Our officers arrived, encountered the male who ran from them. Another officer found the male while he was canvassing the area. The male approached the officer's car, and the officer tried to take him into custody by grabbing his arm. The male started to resist, so officers took the male to the ground, where they were able to successfully handcuff him. The male was charged with indecent exposure, disorderly conduct, and public intoxication, and was transported to the hospital via ambulance for further care. There were no injuries reported in that incident. And the second one, an officer was dealing with a retail theft suspect. As he tried to handcuff her, she began to pull away from him. He did have to grab onto her wrist to gain control of her and to apply the handcuffs. She was charged with retail theft, and again, no injuries were reported. Under community relations, Sergeant Chapenko attended the ribbon-cutting event for the new CP Vets location on Oakwood Avenue. Officer Finocchio attended a drug-take-back event at Wegmans, where we collected 22.4 pounds of unwanted prescription medications. Officer Tuskovich was active with Local Government Week. It seems like it was so long ago, but just literally last month. But he helped distribute the packets and pick up the packets. And I don't know if we ever gave a shout-out, but we should probably give a shout-out to the State College Spikes, who provided the prizes for five, I'm sorry, we did five, I think, five individuals. Each of them at least got passes or tickets to games coming up in the future. The Grand Pies winner, though, got kind of a swag bag, I guess, that had bobble head and a State College bag and hat and things like that. So, so shout-out to the State College Spikes for providing that for Local Government Week for us. And then lastly, Sergeant, I'm sorry, Sergeant, Officer Sunderland conducted a car seat check for a Township resident. Under training and department activities, our officers attended tactical response team training. Sergeant Albright attended the accreditation conference, a yearly thing. Sergeant Chapenko attended training on critical incident response. Detective Saleh and Officer Finocchio attended training on child abuse investigations. Officer Finocchio also attended training on managing criminal informants. And then all of our officers conducted our yearly qualifications with all the weapons we carry, as required by the Municipal Police Officer Education and Training Commission, that we have to do every year. Officer Snyder and Graff completed their two days of training. Graff also attended the Township Open House. It was a big hit here. I think he and the ice cream truck were the big draw. And then also, he did a demonstration for some of the residents at the Village of Penn State. They also conducted a school sniff as part of their training. They went to the Altoona Area High School and did some classrooms in the student parking lot. And then he was also requested by the Pennsylvania State Police to sniff a vehicle. They had stopped, it was traveling the wrong way, actually stopped it in Patent Township. They had him come out to, to check on that vehicle as well. I attended the Center County Emergency Communications Services Meeting, a meeting on radio reprogramming, our Local Government Week Open House, a Radio Advisory Committee Meeting, and the Center County Chiefs Meeting. So, very busy month. We did get a very nice letter, but apparently it's not showing up on the screen.
It's coming.
Is it? Okay, next one. Gotcha. Okay. Officer Snyder, while out on patrol with Graff, noticed a family in the, I believe it was the pool, Park Forest Pool Parking Lot. Got out, introduced himself, and introduced Graff to this woman who wrote this nice letter, and her grandchildren. They absolutely had a fantastic time meeting Graff, and they really, really enjoyed Graff's trading cards that Officer Snyder gave them. Yeah, he does have trading cards, yes. Next, we got a real nice, real quick note from an individual who's had some issues with speeding trucks on Sellers Lane, to Officer Kaufman, appreciating his work in taking care of that issue. Talk a lot about, again, the co-response that we have, and the great, fantastic work, human relationship we have with fire EMS and police all across the center region and center county. Just yet again, another example of that, Chief Sean Kaufman from the Alpha Fire Company sent me this quick email, just to thank Sergeant Albright and Officer Sunderland for their assistance. There was a crash on 99 near the Grayswoods Interchange that shut down 99. So of course, that caused a huge backup of traffic, and the traffic was backing up on the on-ramp. So our officers helped the fire police and Alpha Fire with controlling the traffic and making sure that there were no other accidents and no injuries. So, again, just always a really good coordinated response when we're dealing with police, fire, and EMS in our region. I think you guys are aware at this point that I'm really proud of our agency. I think we have fantastic officers. But this, this is probably one of the best examples we've had in a long time, of an officer just doing an absolutely fantastic job, going above and beyond. Officer Kaufman, and this came from Sergeant Chapenko, because our officers would never tell me that they did this, but I heard about this, kind of third-party, and asked Sergeant Chapenko to do a little research and investigation, and that's what he came up with. But Officer Kaufman, again, just out on patrol, came across an elderly gentleman who's a resident of Patent Township on foot. He came to find that this gentleman was a widower recently, and did not know anybody or have any family in the, in the area, and that he had limited resources. He was on foot and was trying to get to the grocery store to buy some groceries, but had no way of really transporting them home. So Officer Kaufman put him in his car and gave him a ride to Wegmans, where the gentleman was able to make his purchases. He then gave him a ride home and helped him get those, those groceries inside. So as Sergeant Chapenko said, and I clearly agree with, Officer Kaufman certainly is taking his community care, take a role very seriously, and doing a fantastic job. So again, just, I think the positive things that we have to say about our officers just continue to roll in, but I thought that was a fantastic way to illustrate and highlight the great work that they're doing in our community. And then lastly, we did a car seat inspection event. This was in the Target parking lot. We partner with Target every year, so that's just a quick view of the setup that we had down there for that event, inspecting car seats, either installing them or inspecting them to make sure they're installed properly. Lastly, just our record list of calls for service for the month of April. We had 577 calls. That's up from the 549 we handled in March. 144 of those were school checks, and I should, I should have maybe said this before, but just to kind of elaborate a little bit on a school check, anytime one of our officers does anything related to the school, driving to the parking lot, going in and speaking to staff inside, or to the admin folks, going around pulling on doors, a lot of times our midnighters will go check the school doors, just to make sure the school's secure. They, I have them pull this to document how many times and how much, you know, time we're spending at the school. So, clearly, quite a bit, our officers take it very seriously in making sure that our schools are safe. And just flying colors through the schools is very helpful, I think. 68 were traffic calls, and then 49 were health and safety calls. Big majority of those, I just mentioned that, because a lot of those were from the storms that we got, that came through. So many of those calls came in a very short window, period of time, and I'll have something similar to say about that in the month of, in the month of May as well. So, that concludes my report.
Thanks for the report, Chief. Supervisor Whitman?
I saw another post on next door, the, another one in near before, and a neighbor actually came to me, saying that I know there were gunshots on my neighbor the night before. I said, "No." Had she reported, she said, "No." So what is going on?
Fireworks. Generally, those... Yeah, so we, we've actually been getting a pretty decent amount of firework calls already. That, you'll see more so in, in May. My May report that we've been, we've been receiving, put a few calls about fireworks. We are actually gonna partner with State College Burrow. They do something similar to our police planners. If you've ever seen those online, they do, I think it's the SCPD Minute. To, to get some information out there, Graff is actually gonna star in the video, because one of the things we wanna talk about and make sure people understand is how that loud noise affects people's paths, right? So Graff is gonna make a cameo with the State College Police Department, Penn State Police Patent, and I'm not sure Ferguson's participating or not. But, yeah, so we are gonna be filming that on June 3rd and have it out for the public, just to be aware of that. But, yeah, we, we have been getting a pretty, pretty decent amount of calls for fireworks already. So, yep, we're gonna be getting some information about, about that. Anytime, though, if there's any type of suspicious activity, suspicious noise, cars, persons, call. We would rather send an officer out and find that it is a firework, or that it's a neighbor, or whatever the case may be. But please, yeah, don't ever hesitate to call us and have the officers come out and check it out.
I'm glad to know that. They weren't gunshots. I suspected they weren't, but, okay.
Supervisor Rob?
Chief, two things. First, the officer who ran 26-mile marathon, please give him his props.
So that's in, that's gonna be my May report, but...
Oh, okay.
No, it's okay. You brought it up. So Officer Justin Sunderland, he actually participated in the Pittsburgh Marathon on May 4th, I believe it was. He did complete all 26.2 miles in three hours and 45 minutes. So he did a fantastic job. He is crazy enough that he just signed up for the Erie Marathon on September 7th. So, yep, he's gonna be doing another one here very soon. So he figures, he's done all this training, so he might as well knock out a few while he can. So, yep, he's doing another one here. he can, so, yep, he's, he's doing another one here in a few months, so.
Thank him for representing Patton Township.
We will, we will.
The other question I have is, there was a Senate Bill thirty-seven regarding holding handheld devices, phones, texts, and, did you get any information on that?
So, it's funny you say that, because, yes, we will be putting information out. In fact, Officer Tuskovich did a video, he just texted me the other day, so we will put, yeah, we will be putting information out on our website and social medias. I actually have it pretty much prepared to give to Sophie to, to push that out. It goes into effect on June fifth, I believe, so. And that's, the first year will be warnings only, but you're absolutely right, it's going to be pretty much no, no handheld devices unless you are calling nine-one-one, yeah, so.
We just want to make sure that information gets out, no texting, no...
Yep.
You know, emailing, nothing. If you're holding your phone up to your ear, our officers will be...
Yep, like I said, the first year, I believe it is going to be a primary offense, and we will stop and give warnings, and then, June of twenty-twenty-six, we can start writing citations for that, so.
Okay.
That's how the, the legislation's written, so.
Yep.
But, yes, we are, we will be putting information out about that, probably either tomorrow or early next week, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you said if you get pulled over and the cop walks to your car, call nine-one-one?
Not actually what he said.
You said you can only call, use it...
You can, if you are, yeah, if you are using your phone and hand-held the, you know, and you are in your vehicle and driving, if you are, it's an emergency and you're dialing nine-one-one, that is the only exception to the law.
Got it.
Yep.
Thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
For me. Anything else? Public service announcement, apparently there's a lot of cats in the neighborhoods, killing animals and everything else under the sun, so, this was on Next Door as well, so. I don't know if people call, I saw the animal sort of like listing, it seemed like dog bites and stuff like that, or trapped in cars, but there's a lot of...
Have you had many cats, cat calls, is there any neighborhood in particular?
Uh, I don't want to give away the Next Door place that I'm on, but...
Well, they're welcome to give us a call, and we can come out and take a look at it, or ordinance enforcement officers can go out and take a look and see what, if somebody needs to take more action there.
Got it. Park Forest.
(laughing).
All right. All right, next, sorry, where are we at? Public Works, no items, planning and zoning, no items, administration, Mid-State Literacy Council Spelling Bee contribution.
So, last year you gave five hundred dollars to the Spelling Bee, and the Mid-State Literacy Council would like you to consider a donation again for this year. Spelling Bee is on September twenty-fourth.
All right, I'll entertain a motion before we talk about it. A motion to approve the five hundred sponsorship level for the Sp- Mid-State Literacy Council Spelling Bee.
So, I'll second you.
Any discussion?
I, I did want to note that I had missed this before, years before, but they invited all of us to...
You could be a team.
Team.
Can I have a team of three?
Team of three.
Uh, we would be the spellers?
Yeah.
You know, I, I did actually win our Spelling Bee in elementary school.
Did you?
Yeah. And I got a thing of stickers.
Since you knew that information, are you...
Team of three.
Enough to volunteer?
Uh, no.[1024.31][1024.31](laughing). Our firm has a team in them, I'm, I'm Philip, the real spellers.
Yeah, no, okay. Same here. I would need, I would need my handheld. But I just thought, you notice now, my parents used to correct my spelling, my father and my mother.
Okay.
Okay, I just thought I was, I'm not a speller.
Well, I would be happy if there's a community member, like kid or something like that, who wants to do it, I'd be happy to have a team and have some of the kiddos. Yeah.
That'd be great.
So, you heard it here, Patton Township community. CNET, we might as well just have a CNET. Go, go in our place. All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, Lou.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Managers report.
I just want to report on one thing very briefly. We had our Emergency Management Council meeting yesterday, Tuesday. We were up at Penn State in the USB Building, which is where the Emergency Operations Center will be for the stadium during the next couple of years while they're doing construction. We had a very lengthy discussion about the storm that happened on April twenty-ninth, and how we can use this as a moment to sort of reevaluate how we've been doing emergency management notifications and other things. So, we've created actually three subcommittees of the Emergency Management Council. We have the Public Engagement, which I'm going to head up, which, there's actually a group of us that has been meeting in town previous to this, but we're going to look at emergency notifications. Years ago, we had had the guidebook that we put out, we talked about maybe doing that again, but then having to tell people they need to actually keep that and not throw it out, doing something with a QR code. We talked a little bit about the Alert Center app. They didn't do anything with Alert Center during this last storm, but we talked about, because the storm kind of came up so quick, it was ten minutes and it was over, and it was pretty fast, because we were supposed to get this weather, so we talked a lot about pre-storm messaging for when we know there could be, like, if we're in the category three for thunderstorms, so people know what to do, and also doing some education on power lines, power outage, that kind of thing, so I'm heading up that group. Centrice Martin from Ferguson Township's going to head up the operations group and look at, you know, one of the issues we talked about was with communication with West Penn, how we're using fire police, fire personnel, police personnel, that kind of thing, township forces. And then, the other group that's going to be headed up by Sean Kaufman and Tom Fontaine and Adam Brimbaugh is going to look at training, and training in terms of elected official training, because actually, there is a course, and years ago, we used to push all of this, and then the pandemic, we talked about this, pandemic sort of stopped us from pushing all of this, but there's a course, the federal government put together, the National Incident Management System Training, NIMS, and NIMS seven hundred is the course that elected officials were always told to take, because it describes your role and how you should respond in an emergency. One of the gentlemen that was there from Penn State said there's also another class that you can make a hybrid together, so we've talked about perhaps looking at doing something like that, where we could do, you could do an in-person training, or also there'd be an online option for folks as well. And then, looking at additional training, because one of the things we also talked about in twenty-twelve, and Tyler, you might remember this, we did a huge exercise at the Emergency Operations Center at the stadium, it was an all-day exercise, and it was great, because you got to know everybody else that was in your role. So, I was the public information officer for the EM program, but I got to know all the people from Penn State, which was great, because then we could coordinate, and the electric representative and the other people in town. Well, a lot of those people aren't here anymore, a lot of them have retired, and so we talked about how we need to find out who the right people are in all of those various roles within the EOC, and then have all those people start talking to each other, and perhaps look at doing some kind of a training. That full-day training that we did, they brought in a whole exercise, and then, like, there was an outside person that did it, they sat up in the press box, and they would call down every half an hour, "Oh, and this just happened." I think if I remember correctly, they took out the Hafman Township building in that exercise, and like, it was a storm-related event, and we all had to respond, but we all knew who the right people were, so we needed to get back to having those conversations. We've also talked about, because we didn't activate the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center during the storm, but one of the discussion points we had was, maybe what we do is we set a thing where we say after the first twenty-four hours, we jump on a Teams call, and we get a, a regroup of where we are, because we talked about how that first night, it was police, it was Public Works, it was fire, and they were all inundated and overwhelmed with, and nine-one-one with what was going on. The next morning, Brian Bittner said, "We all could have jumped on a Teams call and said, 'This is where we're at, this is what we need, these are the critical issues.'" So, I think what's going to come out of this, and I think it's going to be positive, is a really good deep dive into what we can be doing better, and also, on the messaging side, really making sure we're reaching out to residents and letting them know, and also off-campus students. Penn State said there were a lot of off-campus students that really didn't know what to do, and some of them in the borough didn't have any water in some of their apartment buildings, and the university was getting inundated with calls from concerned parents, and we're looking at ways to take water to the students, but we need to do a better job of reaching out so folks know, and folks that are in situations, critical situations with critical medicines, so they know what they need to do to take care of themselves in that situation, and how they can, you know, prolong what's going on. So, and again, we're going to probably start hammering the seventy-two hours, you have to be prepared for seventy-two hours that no one's going to be able to really help you unless it's critical, because one of the things that Norris Backman from the county shared is, they had people calling, "Well, the telephone line in front of my house is down, and you need to come fix it." Well, nine-one-one doesn't care about your telephone line, they're not going to come get it, and you need to find someone else to get the tree off of it, or whatever, so explaining to people what they do in that situation, and, you know, not touching lines, not messing with power at all until you know what the situation is. So, I think it's going to be good, because I think this is a good event, like Sean said, this is like our tornado, right? This, this was a very unfortunate event, short amount of time, but now we can sort of learn for, from it and put other things in place, because again, it used to be snow, and snowy, you get a couple of days' notice usually when we're getting a big snowstorm, but I think as our climate is changing, we're going to see more of these type of storms and less of the big snowstorms. So, we're probably going to do some reporting back, I don't know, either to Public Safety or to the general forum itself, that was still kind of up for discussion, but I think we have a good path forward on all of this. Elliot.
I think severe situation like this, twenty-four hours is an eternity to the people experiencing it, so I think people should think of smaller bites of getting information out even in the first hour or two. How are you going to do that?
Yeah, and that's one of the things we discussed too, was, so when your phone, when the cell networks go down and you don't have your phone, how are you going to get information? And how do we make it so that people know, okay, this is what happens, so the power's out, the phones are out, this is what I need to focus on, and I need to make sure that I have a place to go, and I have, you know, they talk about a munification plan for your family, but I have a plan for my family if I need to leave the area.
You should be getting information from, doesn't feel secure.
Oh, good.
You got a new transmission.
Oh, good.
But like, you remember those cranky videos?
Yeah, yeah.
You would be getting it from us, because we will have electricity.
Yeah. Pam.
Amy, two things on training. It's Sean, it's Tom, and who else?
Adam Brimbaugh from College Township.
And did you discuss SMART nine-one-one?
We did, we talked about it, and it was funny, the consensus was, we're not sure that that's what we need right now.
Thank you.
Because, again, they didn't push anything out, and what we talked about was, it's really not going to help when the cell networks are down, and when people don't have access to a cellphone, so I think that's one of the things, maybe long-term, that's a recommendation, but the county, and I think everyone in that room agreed, that's probably not something we need right now.
Great, thank you on that one. But we do need like Code Red or something.
So, last week I was at my statewide managers' conference in Lancaster, and I talked with a group out of Pittsburgh, Savvy Citizen, and Savvy Citizen lets you, it's not a lot of money, lets you push out not even just emergency notifications, we can also, when we're having a meeting, push out the agenda and information about the safety fair and other things, so we're actually going to meet with them here in two weeks to talk about what it can do for us. I know Ben had used them when he was at Dormont, and he thought it was a great experience, so that's just another level that we can add in for folks.
And maybe on our education piece, my colleague Elliot presented it at the last meeting of people getting stuck in an elevator.
Yep.
What to do, the panic bell. If you have not ever been stuck in an elevator, it's not a good feeling, especially when you think something else is going on around you, so maybe educating the housing developments, these senior developments that have elevators. Thank you, Elliot.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you, Amy, for, for sitting in and giving us that, sharing that information.
Moving on, committee reports, anything additional that members want to convey from their committees?
I just want to let you know I'll have a report since I met this morning with Parks and Rec Governance.
Got it.
As a replacement, so, thank you.
All right, any other business?
Oh, Elliot.
Elliot.
I was, I was thinking of a thing with the emergency just before, and there are some communities in the country that have these fairly frequently, tornadoes, stuff like that, and I'll bet they know a lot more about what to do about this, how to handle it than many of us around here, and I'm wondering if we should mind that.
It, it's interesting, we talked about that as well, because we talked about how messaging and getting people to use apps and things, and the discussion was, we don't have enough, thankfully, enough weather here, but if you're in an area that's prone to tornadoes or hurricanes, you're doing whatever they're telling you to download, so you have that information, so we have to find a way to convince people that this wasn't just a one-and-done situation, and get them to understand why they need to have access to this information.
They, they also have the sirens in tornado country. Where I lived in west, eastern Pennsylvania, if you've heard anything, there was a siren of the fire.
Yeah.
Alerting everybody that there was a fire somewhere.
We had the Three Mile Island Siren.
All right, anything else? All right, moving on, the business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Meeting's adjourned.